Go through this. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November twenty second, two thousand and twenty one. Meeting of the planning board. I'd like to remind everyone that we are being recorded audio visually. As we go forward in our meeting, I'd like to call the meeting to order at exactly five o'clock. And the members present constitute John Contrini, myself, I'm the chair. Of the planning board, Rudy Harco is our secretary. Jenny Ward is with us by Zoom. Johnny Withy is here, Noel is here. Dawn Oldbrook is here, Maureen Hopkins is here as well. So we have a full complement of all seven members of the planning board. And this brings up something that occurred to me when I was thinking about planning board members. If a regular member of the planning board is absent, one of our alternates will fill that spot of that meeting. Question is, which of our two alternates? If both are here, it's only one spot to fill. And I just want to suggest that we go alphabetically by last name. So if someone were missing tonight, Dawn would be the replacement. Then next time. Then we'll.
So I think that when they're filed, they're assigned by the clerk, it's by, she had to assign the primary and secondary alternate.
Yes. So who did they assign primary?
I think that as the order they were loaded, it was Dawn and.
Okay, so that works out.
Yeah, it was, that was, that was, Roxanne did you do that when she?
Okay. Good to know. So Dawn's the primary and Maureen's secondary. We have a vacancy one evening as Dawn will fill in. And then, yeah, next time, quarter of the morning, vice versa. So you get experience. Also, do you mind, code enforcement officer, Peter Leathers, and also town manager Mike Roy is with us. We also have a representative from CAD in the hospital. For the cast of thousands, Zooming, Adam Comstock, Marie Vignot. Jocelyn Booth and Brian DeGrasse, right? That's your team. Okay, thank you very much. Oh, we don't have the minutes of the last meeting to consider, so we're gonna postpone that to our next meeting. So we'll have that all. As you know, there's a staff shortage in the office, so we gotta move on with that. So no, no minutes to move or second. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Anyone's like to make? No. Any conflicts of interest among board members? Saying no. Okay, we've ordered the CEO.
We had. Of course, I was out on vacation first week. And then we had the second week, we came back and there was a flurry of activity. We had five permits issued, four for sheds and generators, oh, sorry, two for generator sheds. One for construction, eight by twelve shed, one to do a garage, thirty six by fourteen garage, and then one for tree cutting. And that all happened on Monday, Tuesday, returning. The rest of it's been been kind of short staffs, so they're answering phones.
Right.
Keeping things going.
Good. So we're up to one hundred and seventy nine permits as of this date compared to thirty two. And thank you for keeping the spreadsheet up to date every, every other Friday. It's very interesting to get to see, get an idea of what's going on in town. Any questions from Peter about his report?
A question, John.
Yes.
Is the dumpster off of South Maple, is, is that based on a construction project that's happening there or?
Here, that's an investigation I'm going right now. We believe there, the person that's that owns the condemned trailer on South Maple is getting ready to dispose of it, but I can't get a call back yet. I've been chasing that for the last, you know, week or so.
All right, and can you share with us where the location for Meredith's daycare would be?
Meredith's daycare will be on Pleasant Street. I think it's Prospect, Prospect Street. Twenty nine Chuck Mason's old house.
Oh, the yellow one, okay.
She did submit a conditional use application, but she did not make it tonight. The clerk had mentioned that it may end up something that she needs to speak to since it's pretty pretty normal business.
Okay. So action items for this evening include CAD's conditional use permit package, which you've all had a chance to peruse, maybe not all the maps and everything that came with it, but certainly the documentation that came with it. And so our goal this evening is to review the packet, make sure that it's complete to our satisfaction. Ask any questions, remind of the Northern Lights team. And then the next step will be at the, two weeks from now, will be that the public hearing. Schedule that, get it advertised, have the public hearing, and then we will vote at the next meeting on the conditional use permit application. So any questions about the application that's been submitted? Well, compliment you on its thoroughness. I mean, you've answered each of our conditions right down. The thought was very useful. Appreciate the fact that it's been typed. We don't, we don't get them so nicely typed, illegible.
Oh, it's right. The only outstanding issue that I've seen with the package that we, that we're currently still working on is, is, is the signage.
Yeah, I was gonna raise that issue, yes. Yeah, so we need to have that before we go forward to weeks.
I have a couple. I have a couple of questions, John. Um, first of all, it was great that you incorporated the specs for the lights that are that you wish to install on the property. It's not a lighting plan per se, but I see that probably, that's probably included in some of the plot plans, but this light fixture can take on a variety of different forms, both in the, the number of light bulbs and the refracting ability of it to be anywhere from three thousand to five thousand K. So I would be interested in having a little bit more detail. And again, if it's on the plot plan, I apologize in advance. As well as the height of the poles.
So there's, there is a photometric plan in your, in all the plans are all folded up.
Okay.
There, it has the the foot candle readings, and it also has a schedule. The poles are sixteen foot. But it's, I don't know what sheet it is, but it's rolled down for a while. It's it's probably I think it's right before the landscape line, which was.
So it was one of the larger maps? It wasn't one of the smaller ones that was?
I just provided the cut sheets for those, so you can, you know, see what they're there. I don't know if you can read all those numbers, but those, you know, those are the the lighting footprints, and then there's readings for the bookcandle, so we're making sure that there's no light spillage off the property. Everything's, you know, directed downward. I'm not a lighting specialist. I know enough to be dangerous, but.
So what do they mean, like the three point four?
So that's three point four footcandles, but if you like zoom in, like along the property line, you'll see where it goes to zero. So there's, I think in your lighting ordinance, there's, I can't remember offhand with the, with the maximum allowable. Was it like half a foot candle? I can't remember. Maybe you know.
Not offhand.
Okay.
You sure it was no, hence the not, because?
No, there's like in here, there's a little section. I believe so.
And so this describes the light poles, but what about the lights on the building? On the buildings themselves? Is that somewhere as well?
Our Jocelyn and Adam, they can talk, can you provide the, Jocelyn?
Yeah, we, we don't have very many lights on the building. Most of them are sight lighting on poles. We do have a couple of signs that will be part of that signage package. And then a couple of emergency battery packs at the back of the building for code. And I, I think those have all been accounted for in that photometric plan, but we can double check with the lighting engineer.
And in terms of the sign, is that a sign that's your intention is to have it lit from inside? Or will this be an externally lit sign?
If it's lit, it will be internally lit. David, do you have that signage sheet that we submitted? I just want to double check, because I know we've gone through each of those signs on which ones is gonna be lit and which wasn't.
Yeah, it's in the package. It's the last two sheets, Mike.
To go to the very next, yeah, go to the next page.
It's the last sheet on this.
Yeah, this shows the location of the proposed signs, and the next sheet lists whether they're gonna be listed or not. So if it's. Yeah, this has building stuff as well, the signs on the buildings, if you zoom out a little bit.
So it says.
The emergency sign. Yep, so the emergency sign is illuminated as it needs to be. The main entrance not illuminated, donor signs not illuminated.
And how many signs in total?
On the building, on the property.
On the property.
We would have to go back to the sheet before this, take a look at that.
There's eight.
And they're all internally lit?
Well, no, the site signs, the only sign that's lit is the existing pylon sign on Pritham Avenue. All the rest of the site signs are, are not illuminated. I'm sorry, I take that back. There's a little, there's a monument sign at the visitors' drop off. So there's one existing illuminated sign, it's the pylon sign, and there's another one proposed at the visitors' drop off. And then the building signs, it's the emergency sign on.
And I think, David scrolling up, I think I saw that the the sign that's gonna be on the front face of the building, the Northern Light Help sign, is intended to be illuminated as well.
So above the door.
So where is this in our packet?
Yeah.
It's the last two.
And.
It's the big plans.
The big plans.
And I do have one question, because I know last time you talked about having a beacon up in that little peak. I didn't just see if you changed the, the lighting on that. I know that we were worried a little bit about having a bright light on the top of the moon possible. Okay, I didn't, well, I neither, so I was just wondering if it was addressed.
Could somebody confirm that beacon is?
Could you repeat that? I couldn't quite hear that question. Confirm if the beacon is what? So there's two lights going on in that cupola that you should know about. One is on top of the cupola, and that's the FAA required helipad light is up on top of it. That is not subject to the lighting ordinances. That's a life safety feature that needs to be on there at the tallest point of the building, so that's going up there. And then there is a light intended inside, you can see it's glass there, inside of there, and I'm not sure if that cut sheet was included or not. But I know the intent was that it was included in the photometric plan as far as making sure the light spread didn't go past where it was supposed to. But we can double check on that for you as well.
Thank you.
I think, I think a beacon was the wrong choice of word originally, or I don't, I don't think that's.
Yes.
I think it's more of a, just a soft glow, right, Jocelyn?
Yes, correct. Yes.
It's not a light, it's not a light house.
It's not gonna be zooming around in circles, shining on itself, yeah.
Was there any thought given, I know when I took a look at the plans, and I've lived in this community a super long time, and my question is, is that the hospital has two main entrances, and then the third kind of being a entrance into the back of the hospital complex. Has there been any, been any thought about taking those two streets out in front of the current hospital and coordinating that into one? I do know that historically, it was a one-way situation where you would always come in the, the western entrance and leave the eastern entrance. And I do know that, and then it became a situation where you could go in and out of either one, which was a little bit. It was narrow there, so it was a little dicey. But my question is, is that when you exit the western one, it's really hard to see oncoming traffic coming up over the hill that's traveling east. So was there any consideration, you know, I don't, I don't wanna throw, you know, a grenade and onto this project, but was there any consideration about consolidating that into one entrance?
So. Yeah, this is, Jenny, this is a private driveway. This here.
That we're all using right now to come in and out of the hospital complex.
This, this homeowner, this property owner, this is the town street.
Right, so I'm just asking the question about whether or not the consolidation into the hospital having its own entrance. Or, or using just downstream and not.
Do you have your preference on which one? Because I, I know from, I know for a lot of ambulances, I believe they come in what's known as Hospital Street off of Pritham, and they, and they come in from Murray. And they use that outside sort of circulation. But we didn't think about closing the driveway, no.
I just know in terms of in and out, the western entrance and exit is, it's tricky. It's hard to see cars coming up over that hill until they're right there on you.
That's a private driveway, they can't close that. And maybe it's properly permitted, and it's been there forever.
It, it would affect it for, yeah, well, that, I think it would affect the ambulance being able to service coming off of Pritham. Because you'd have to go down South Dome and then kind of find your way through a parking lot. I don't think you wanna do that with an ambulance.
The, the only significant change other than business about signage, we don't hear more about, is the hours of work. I think last time we talked about seven AM to three thirty PM. And in your application package, you said sometimes it may be necessary to adjust that to six thirty. Start time around at seven, and quit time four thirty PM around the day three thirty.
I think it's a, it's a function of
Yeah.
the seasons, daylight saving time, and it's like, and it's not.
Sure, I just wanted to point out the whole.
I think we wanted to just make sure it's like one shift. I mean, and I can be working twenty-four hours a day.
It'll be seven to three thirty. I just asked the contractor, and then they just, I just didn't know if it was
Yeah.
hard and fast. I mean, if we said seven to three thirty, and the guys are there at six thirty, I didn't want somebody in trouble.
No. I just want to make sure that we're aware of it on the planning board. Anything, anyone else saw in the application?
Can I ask about this? I mean, I guess we talked about the signage permit. Pete was nice enough to get back to me, you know, today. And I asked originally, I just was, originally when I was here, you know, whether they could be done separately, because I'm not sure in a two-week period whether I can get everybody to make all these changes to the signage and everything and keep on schedule. I mean, kind of need to keep on schedule, so I'm not sure if we can. I mean, I know we can come to resolutions, just, I'm not sure.
So you're, you're suggesting we do it separately, approve the package?
Or make it conditional or something, like I can't fully permit or something until the signage is.
Okay.
So I won't take that long, it's just, I'm not sure I can have everything resolved to you guys and go back before a public hearing too fast.
Board members, what do you think? Were we comfortable with that? Deciding on the complete packet minus the signage two weeks hence?
Well, I feel that if it's written in our permit that we, when, if we approve it, it's written in that they have a month to, I don't, I think it should be a time. It shouldn't be, we, they have three months to get it. They, they have a month to get their signage together. And if they don't, then we cannot, you know, Pete's gonna.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my theory.
So a month would be actually six weeks. To up to the time that we meet again next time, and then a month after that approval process, so six weeks from today.
Do you feel that?
Would you be comfortable with that in terms of?
Hey, Murray and Brian, are we okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Dawn, can you, have we, is there precedent to do this? Have we done this before?
Not to my knowledge. It's not to say it happened, I just don't remember.
I just want to make sure that I mean, I'm, I'm all for allowing an exception, but I just want to make sure that it doesn't doesn't cause a slippery slope that we are asked to do it again in other instances for similar reasons, you know, for.
Well, I, I don't think that we've considered a project this complicated.
You just don't give them a permit to.
We'll just, we'll just wait on the permit until we have that information in hand. Or do you want to wait on the whole process? We use it, Tom's clicking right times.
Yeah, I mean, just you know, the hospital's busy getting philanthropic people involved, and we need to keep the project moving forward. And if we, you know, get towards an approval, then that helps them do what they need to do, because they would like to start construction in April. But the science, I can take that long, it's just if there's a pub, you know, I'd like to leave here tonight knowing I got a public hearing in two weeks, and I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to get everything signage-wise.
David?
Yes.
This, Brian, is this just a matter of meeting with Monago and getting these shrank up? Or what is it involved?
Yeah, I mean, you know, talking to Pete here, you know, these directional signs need to be half the size that they are. It's, it's, you know, like, like three feet high, not six feet high.
So that's, yeah, that's easy, and I'll.
I mean, it's just, I didn't know, you know, I don't. It, it, I don't know how much, I mean, obviously, you have a branding thing, but, you know, we also need to work with the town what they require, so.
Yeah. I'll pull the correct people together.
Gonna be accomplished in two weeks, you think? Brian?
With the holiday, I'm, I would.
On the holiday, yeah.
I don't dare to say yes, you know, I, I just don't. A lot of people are off, and I have, there is a handful of people that I have to pull together to, to make this happen.
The ground mounted sign would have to be adjusted as well, or?
Yep.
Okay, so boards, what is the board's?
I know Pete wants, I just need to.
Get it done. Okay, what kind of direction should we give Northern Lights team this evening?
Get it done as soon as possible.
Get it done soon as possible. I'm sure you want to do that as well, so, yeah.
But the deadline?
I think we need a deadline. If we're going to extend it, and we, we need a time, we can't, because if we don't put a time on the edition, it could be three months. So that's my only, if we're going to go forward, we need to have a month, or whatever, if you want to do it in six weeks, because we're gonna be going in two weeks to make this book. But that's my thought. I would give everyone else's.
Does the conditional permit will depend on whether or not you get signed? So if you don't get it done, then we don't issue a permit.
All right. Put that in a minute. I, I think you stated that appropriately. That's how we proceed, okay? So we'll come back in two weeks, we'll look at the.
So I have a, I have a public hearing in two weeks?
We are gonna have a public hearing in two weeks, yeah.
Is there a date? Is there a date and time for that?
Public hearing will be at our next meeting, which is?
I believe it's the thirteenth of December.
December the thirteenth. And the public hearing is usually a half hour before our meeting, our regular meeting, so that would be four thirty PM. And we'll be here to answer any questions, and some, some of you should be here, of course, obviously. To answer any technical questions that might come up in the public. And we'll advertise it in the local paper with notices around town about the public meeting. And it's anyone's guess how many people will show up. Sometimes ten, sometimes none, that's my experience. It's anyone's guess. Yeah.
Just for clarity, what time is the public hearing?
Four thirty.
Four thirty, oh.
Yeah, it's a half hour before our regular meeting, so.
Haven't we in the past done it at five and just started our meeting late? Or not?
I, that's a good idea. Let's do it that way. Yeah, let's start at five. Start at five and start meeting at five thirty, sure. Good idea. So Peter, you'll take care of the advertising of the meeting and?
And I have a question.
Let me get.
It's about the advertising.
Sorry, I just didn't know what you're saying.
Okay, I can help. It's sort of an official legal thing we have to do to inform the public. And it needs to be done a week ahead of the meeting, so a week ahead of the thirteenth, if it's planned. Yeah. Okay, do you want to break?
So when we, did we decide, I'm trying to remember, when we talked about having us advertise it and put it in the newspaper, is that on the town, or is it on the people applying for?
The applicant.
Is the applicant, okay, just wondering, okay, I just wanted to make sure, I couldn't remember.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because we do so many of these, it really just added up.
It's got its four square already.
All right, any other questions, or? So we will see you in two weeks. Okay?
So our application's good?
Is as complete as I'll ask the rest of the board, but I believe it's complete, except for the signage.
It's as complete as I've ever seen in a while.
Complete as he hears. Yeah, you're gonna be using less water than you're currently using. I've noticed that's the case in the water, so. Right, that's a fabulous project, because we wanna, wanna help you move along.
Can I just make one quick comment? And I don't, I, I just want to make sure that the, the planning board doesn't get into trouble, but I noticed that the wastewater report stating that the, the new hospital was good to go was an actual email sent from Danny Deagles' phone. Is that, that's legally, that's legally binding? We're all set there? We don't need to have something on letterhead?
Yeah, so I, it's funny you ask that. So I, I asked him for a letter, and then he.
and then he wrote me the email and then I asked him to put it on the letter and he actually wrote me back and says, just send the email. I guess he didn't want to write it, he was busy. That's what I did.
He is always very busy, but I just want to make sure that there isn't anything further down the line that, that this would cause a hip hop in, that's all.
We've been, we, well, we've been talking to him off and on for months, so he's been out of the site, he's, he's well aware of the project.
I suppose if he puts his name through it, it doesn't matter if it's on letterhead or not.
I'm just, I'm looking out for the planning board, just in case.
Ideally, it should be, all, all the others are, all the others are on letterhead, they look official, so.
But there is a fee control.
Yeah, there's a fee control. Come back when I accept it. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
I think we're good. It's good, in two weeks, all right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we move to old business, we have two items of old business here. And the first one I'd like to take up is the Greenville Board Application Form, which I just put on the screen. And you'll remember this came out of our usings when we were going through the process, trying to include new members to the board and we looked at the application form that's been in existence for many decades, I suppose, decades at least. And so we, we thought we'd sort of modernize it and make it a little bit more explicit. And I suggested that the select board do this because this is a town form, it's not a planning board form. And the town threw it back on the head of the board, so. Since we have the most interest, the most recent interest in it and the most experience with it. So Jenny has graciously come up with a draft and I think, as I said in the emails that weeks ago when we canceled the rape fee, she created a fillable form, how do, how do you do that? A form that's fillable. You have special software?
CDOV Pro.
What's that?
You've seen a W Pro.
Adobe Pro, yeah. That's cool, that's good, so. Okay, has everyone had a chance to look at it, any suggestions? You know, please chime in often as well. Because you've just went through this experience and you filled one of these out, is there anything you thought maybe was missing or?
Uh, no, I think having it available electronically is great. It covers some that to generate every time.
Yeah, that is cool.
It would be, there's a couple areas where I think they would lend themselves better to a checkbox, so of course, if it's an online form, that will be easy. Some of these questions, I know that when I filled out and they were talking about when your term begins and ends, that's not necessarily something that a candidate might know, especially initially. I, I questioned why somebody would be asked their occupation, who they were employed with. Just wondering if that's pertinent to the discussion, especially if there's an opportunity to either ask them for a resume or a CV or some sort of work history.
I would feel about that.
I think it'd be a great idea to just have someone attach a resume.
What's that?
I think it'd be a great idea to have someone attach a resume.
Yeah. Where would you put that?
Uh, we just have them attach it to the form, just submitted.
Or we're ask you to put occupational employment by, you could put verbiage saying, can you please attach resume and then it'd be passed and asked for us. Because if we don't put that on the application, they won't know. Because I don't, I mean, if we're going to get a resume, we shouldn't be asking occupation and employment because it's going to be included there.
And I think that when we leave an opportunity for people to answer these questions, so for example, if they don't have a resume, obviously, we don't want to, you know, we don't want them to not be part of the process in case they don't have that important document, but if we're going to provide them enough space to answer the questions, it needs to be more than just one line, we need to make sure that that fillable document allows for, you know, 100, 150 words so that people are compelled to, to answer completely.
So, Mike, if you were going to, you get the work telephone number you're going to check for references, is that why you need that? I mean, if you're not having an interview process, why do you? Is that currently on the, on the existing document?
I guess what I filled out with that part of the application, I questioned it as well and I was just wondering if it was because did I have an interest, is my place of employment trying to plan something that they need done at, at their business and I'm gonna go and I'm gonna help them succeed that? But that's the only reason why I thought it was all there, just to make sure that I wasn't some sort of a conflict of interest from my employer.
Right.
So.
Yes, I just checked the old, the current form, the existing form and we do not have the work phone number.
Is there an opportunity, which I'm sure probably is going to be looked at?
Oh, yeah.
It's, we, we're not inventing the, the wheel here, so there's probably a great template or document or tool that another city or town is using that we might be able to adapt for what we need it to be.
Well, work number, I think we should just clarify, it's only for contact and not to get in touch with your employer. It's just the means of contact.
Well, it says preferred method of contact, so I can put my own phone. Preferred method.
Right.
And that's all.
Wouldn't be super relevant now, I mean, you don't actually call people at work, you just call their cell phone.
Right.
And I think when you fill out the application, no post office box, you need a physical address.
Yeah. Home address and.
Uh, physical, not a P R, not a P R box.
No, no P R?
Because, you know, P R, all right, that's probably maybe a mail or maybe both, but if people give you a post office box, Greenville, but they don't live in Greenville and that was a big issue, you have to be Greenville or Greenville Junction, so you need a physical address.
So you could have both.
Both, yeah, but you want to know where they live.
Yeah, you also want to be able to mail stuff.
No, no, but I mean, that, the question was, do you, are you a Greenville or Greenville Junction resident? And that's, you know, if you went to Beaver Cove and there's going to be a post office box address for Greenville, are they, see, that's my point.
And on top of it, if we want, we can just put residents.
Well, another thing to make sure is that someone can have a Greenville address and not be a resident, so I mean, it's kind of like going to get your driver's license, you have to have a power bill or you have to have something that proves that you're a resident of Maine, so if we, we, are we going to require proof that they're actual resident of Greenville? Because I'm not sure an address is always what's going to provide you with that information.
Well, you want to put a physical address plus proof of residency of where you live? Because that was the issue, you got to be Greenville or Greenville Junction.
Well, we could also just put under here, if you ask your address and physical address and just have a spot where they could fill in residents, like when I ask people, I will create to you, where do you, like, your, your license, like, where's your residence? Are you Maine and what town? Like, you can say Greenville, they say Massachusetts, and I'm like, sorry, we can't have you on our board.
They've got to be here full time, they can't be five months in Colorado and the rest of the year.
Right, yeah, that would be hard.
This is what I'm trying to say, that you've got to, if this is what you want, then you've got to have proof that this is where they live.
Well, should we say something like permanent resident? Permanent residents, physical residents?
Permanent physical.
And then mailing address. Sorry, you were resident of Greenville or Greenville Junction, yes or no? Yeah. Full time resident or?
Well, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so yes or no, then we'll ask for the physical address, we'll ask for the mailing address, preferred method of contact. Should we just strike the work phone out of it? Since we're not going to be calling references? Home phone, email?
So, well, because they already are putting their home phone in, like, on the bottom, occupation, employment, I don't think we need their, like, we could, I think.
I would change home to contact. This is, this is the old, this is the old form, right, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Well, let's go to Jenny's. I don't have. Oh, you don't have Jenny's? Jenny, do you have it? I can share my screen, I mean, uh. Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me look for it, Mike, hold on, it's been a while.
Okay. Let me know if you find it, I'll give you, well, I'll just do it. What I like about ours is it's clean, I mean, we just get nine questions, it's spaced and organized.
Well, hers is set up, definitely solutioning, we should be tweaking Jenny's.
I'm not having any luck.
I sent it out November 8th, preparing for that meeting that we didn't have because of the cancer, so. I have it on my laptop, I don't wish.
That's interesting because right before the meeting, I went to print it off and I couldn't find it in my email and I was looking at emails from you, John, so.
Can we just make a copy for the members to look at? Jenny's.
John, was it a different email address that you might have sent it from? That's not the shared one that you have with Margarita?
Nope, it's that one, the same one.
Same one? Yeah, the, I, I see where you canceled the meeting on the 8th, but I'm not seeing any other emails from you on that day.
Yeah, I never. It was previous to that time. And I asked Peter to have it ready for on the screen today.
It looks like it was October 29th that I think I sent it around to everybody, let me look at my sent email.
No, we're getting copies of, um.
Jenny's.
Okay, I found it.
Who found it?
Hold on.
Okay, so we all have a copy and you have your copy, right, Jenny? We're all looking at the same thing. So we're going to add the question after the candidate.
Can we go from the top?
Sure.
This one?
Right.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Because we talked about, it says home phone, microphone, did we want to just do the top just saying preferred contact number and leave it at that instead of the boxes, so we go preferred method of contact and then we, please form to put their phone number and then email yours.
Okay. So just eliminate the choice, home phone work phone, put a line in there or?
I think so, because people want more options than we put it in there.
And we're going to add two addresses, one for mailing, one for physical?
Yes.
And then did I hear?
And then you had a question, are you a full time resident of Greenville or Greenville Junction? Yes, under the box, yes or no?
Okay. And we're going to remove the employment question?
What do you think?
I don't know, I just don't think we need to know where somebody works, I mean, I understand what Dawn was saying about potential conflict of interest, but we all have a conflict of interest at some point if we're involved in the community at any level, so I think that can be dealt on a case by case basis. I don't think it should exclude you.
Right, plus the next question is relevant experience and or employment, and if they want to talk about their employer, they have that opportunity.
Yeah. Yeah, so number two, let's scratch that, because that might, that may be off putting to a person who is not employed, like a retired person or somebody who is unemployed for whatever reason.
Or a student.
Or a student. A relevant experience and or employment, that's legitimate, you know, if you have something that relates to planning. We'll turn it into this person, person in construction, whatever. You may also attach a resident, should we make that a requirement?
It says it right here, you may also attach one, something.
Right, instead of may though, I'm saying should we just say, please attach a resident? If you have one or? Or just leave it may?
Leave it may.
Leave it may, okay. Please describe the areas of expertise and contribution you make to further the mission. That's what we want. Prior experience serving as a board member for other nonprofit organizations.
Oh, I would say or, not for, or I guess, a board member with or, I mean, three board members for private organizations as well, so.
For other nonprofit or private. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the volunteer commitments you currently have.
Should I change that to have or had?
Your.
Present and past?
Had or had. Okay, Greenville Planning Board meets on the second and fourth Monday, that's FOU are.
Oh, yeah.
Spelling correct there. Fourth Monday of every month at 5:00 PM, the meeting lasts about two hours. Have any standing commitments that create a scheduling conflict for you? Okay? Why are you interested? That's always good. Listen. Please share any other information, so that's wide open. And then for board use, yeah, the board use, that's a new element, what, what do we think of that? You all into that form? That would be to this board or the other board that the town has.
I, I thought that it might. I, I thought that it might be an interesting tool to help us trap applicants as they come in, in hopes that, you know, we're. Inundated with applicants and have to keep them all straight. I think it's important for any board to make sure that they have a process in onboarding and bringing new board members in, and to make sure that. Things line up and are done in a similar. Repetitive fashion, so that there's consistency and that everybody is treated in the same way, um, in terms of the process.
Do you want to have a review by the committee?
So I actually took this from another document, so we can customize this section.
Yeah.
Like, obviously, the personal meeting should be there. Um, perhaps just needs to be reviewed by the board, that there is no committee review, and then. The vote, or. The board agrees to hand that person up to the select board, so there may be. The removal and maybe insertion of, of something that. Matches the process that we currently follow.
Would, would the personal meeting need to be personal, or could it be a telephone call, or an email exchange, or something? Mary Smith, the emails, is, I'm interested in the planning board, you know, I know you have a vacancy on the planning board, what can you tell me about it? Do that over the phone or email, or do we have to have a person?
Or, or were you referring to, or did we talk about, or did we want to have? An actual interview, or are we going to just take the application and go and go from it and do the review?
Well, we're reviewing among ourselves.
Right, well, no, because when I see nominee, nominee has had a personal meeting with, they're an officer or director, that makes me think that was an interview.
Yeah.
That's what I'm getting out of that checkbox, but I might be interpreting it differently.
But is that required?
It's not.
It's not, that's why I'm asking, but what I, I get out of that checkbox is, they had a personal meeting, and to me that. It would feel like an interview. But that's how my interpretation is. So I'm just wondering what everyone else is seeing.
Any thoughts, any other thoughts on that?
We have nominee reviewed by the committee, meaning. Is it just the application, or is it a personal interview? And is the committee the planning board?
Yeah, then that's, the nominee is a person, so it suggests a person would come before the committee and we'd interview. Him or her. And we've never done that before, which is.
That's why, yeah, so what you, that's defined committee as, because you.
So another thing, we could, nominee's application reviewed by committee.
Yeah.
And then. Nominee's application was proposed to the board. If we're going to go with, because this is for board view, so this is a package, this is in our hands, we have a filled out application. And. Which board? Well.
I mean. Nominee review.
It's a select board.
Supposedly the select board.
I would put select for that.
Yeah, yeah.
This is the planning board, and it gets confused. And it.
So. It's my understanding that the, the planning board and the select board, um. Are similar in the process, a little bit similar in the process. Obviously, the same information is gathered. So maybe there's an opportunity to customize the bottom section for whether you're applying for a, a board membership. With the select board or with the planning board. But I think that from our last discussion, it was clear, and that's why this is asking more pointed questions and asking for. Resume, that we wanted a more professional approach to the process. So perhaps. When they send in their application, perhaps there is an interview with either the chair of the board or with the C E O. And then the nominee's application is reviewed by the board. Here it says committee, because larger boards. Often have a subcommittee that's in charge of bringing new board members on, but here we could clarify by saying nominee. Nominee's application reviewed by the board, so not unlike we, you know, we did for Donna and Maureen. And then that third step would be that the nominee is either proposed, um, or approved. To be voted on by the select board, so that would make this a planning board document. Um, but then if they were going to, the select board was going to use this, then it might look a little bit different.
Well, excuse me.
They're voted on.
Oh.
Right, if they're elected.
Right, but there may be, are there other subboards, like the planning board that have, yeah, so.
The import of larger committee as an example would be great use, so I agree with what she said about the progression.
Okay. Yeah, and before these, uh, the nominee's applications went to the select board, the select board considered them, and that was it. Without any input from the planning board, this is the first time that the planning board. Appeared before the select board and said, we have so many candidates, these are the ones we recommend. Uh, and then the select board acted on that, but that's the first time. And I think it's a good precedent to follow up on, before new members such as myself just parachuted into the meeting. Said without the planning board knowing beforehand. As far as I can tell.
So I guess what I would need to know was, do we want to leave that top line vague? Because vagueness allows that to either be an interview, or a phone call, or Zoom, or a personal.
I, I, I would be comfortable with that, as had a meeting, just drop personal, any kind of meeting. Or has consulted with.
Discussion.
Discussion, some terminology like that, yeah.
And that, would that be with the, the chair of the board, or with the C E O, or the town manager? Who is that? Who is that person? Because it leaves it kind of officer, director, or other. Do we want to point that in a. Certain direction?
Or board member? Board member, or.
Or a committee member, because like the if, what advisor committed.
Okay, a board or committee member.
So that means somebody could meet with me.
Yeah.
And that would be sufficient? To bring the application to the board?
That would show that the person was interested, because they sought you out, because they know you, maybe. Should we show that they were interested, and they had some initiative, they'd learned about the board, what they heard was encouraging, so that they submitted that, uh, an application. And then when the application came in, perhaps the person with whom they met could speak to. If we didn't know who the person was, could speak to the qualifications of the. It's not a job interview, it's a volunteer position, I don't want to make the hurdles so high.
Yeah, but this stuff is hard, John. Like, you have to have somebody that's willing to go through these large applications and go on site visits and. I mean, I think this is incredibly important volunteer work.
Can you make, and we're still talking about for board use. Can you make it specific if it's to the select board, well, select board is voted on, but to the airport committee or the planning board? Can you make, leave a spot where the nominee had with a board or committee, nominee reviewed by committee, but you don't know which committee? And it's, can you say the nominee met with the planning board? Or the select board?
If this is, if this is a like a D O V, um, application. And if someone came into the town office and it's easily, if this is like something for the planning board. And here's a planning board application. Oh, I, I want to have a airport board application. Then they can print out that or have that on file, one that says airport committee.
So it refers to what the only nominee is and what you're applying for. This is for, this is generic, it refers to all of them.
Right, and that's because this is the draft, but I think we're going, I think it's easily done, that we could easily. This is the planning board application, because whatever other committees or boards there are. This could be easily.
I don't. If I could, if I could get a list of all the boards that would follow this process, I can easily add checkboxes at the top.
But at the end, we need the select board to approve this, because.
Right, but it sounds like the select board approves all of them, so that would be standard verbiage at the bottom.
Right.
Not, yeah, because the select board is selected.
No, no, but she's saying like, so it says for board use, it says nominee, nominee has had a meeting with, and it would say. A board member or C E O. And then the next one would be nominee reviewed by the, the planning board. And then the bottom would be nominee proposed to the select board, right, correct?
Okay. Jenny, could you do another draft for us? Those changes?
I certainly will. Mike, are you able to provide me with a list of how many different boards this application could be used for, that we could?
Again, it may not be tomorrow.
Okay, that's all right. I'll make it work for the planning board first, and then we can, we can tweak it for the rest of them.
That's good. Thank you. All right, we have enough energy left for the, uh, other documents. This was, this was the ordinance, yeah, there it is there, this is the one that was last, uh. Updated nineteen ninety four. And then reviewing it. Uh, at least I saw some. Things that were, uh. Missed, I think, in the document, primarily having to do with the resignation of a board member. A board member who didn't attend meetings, uh, that, that's not covered, I didn't think adequately. But then looking, looking at the whole document, I started, I started to revise this nineteen ninety four document. But the organization, first couple of paragraphs stipulate how the. Initial board members are to be chosen, first for three years, and then. For staggered kinds of time, and we don't need that anymore, because the board is established with staggered terms, so we don't need that anymore. And so I, I changed the focus, and in the new document that I drafted, if you could show that, do you have that right, the new one? It should be on that. Should be on there, he says, yeah.
The next, next document.
That's the old one, yeah.
Get out of that and go to the P D F. It's a new P D F, excuse me. Then it might be in the Word section. Say it right there.
Yeah, I thought that, I thought to sort of.
Jenny can't see this.
What's that?
I don't think Jenny can see this one, hang on, I gotta stop sharing this one.
Okay.
And those, those are in those folders that have been in your box since two meetings ago. Was the one you had for your friend that.
Jenny, can you see that?
I cannot. Got it now.
Got it now, good. So in drafting something that we might consider going forward, I changed the focus from establishing. The board, because the board already is established, changed the focus to establishing the administration. Of the planning board, how the planning board actually runs. So it was established. And that is noted in the first, I put line numbers in the left, uh. Uh, in the left margin, so we could refer to particular lines, but. I refer to, to the ordinance of nineteen ninety four as establishing, uh, the planning board. So we don't have to deal with the establishment of the planning board, it's been established. And so the rest of it deals with the organization. Procedures. Duties and powers. Want to go down through it, or can you edit, or you have comments about it? What's that?
It changes.
You made changes, good, good, good.
But just, you know.
Do we have to have changes reviewed by Gwen?
It's going to be in the web, that's, yeah, we're going to need that, here's an ordinance, right? Yeah. What's that, Gwen? If you could not discuss this at one point, have a way to review it. Okay, Maureen, you have some changes?
Oh, they're just, um. Define like the planning board, define it as the board shall be responsible for duties.
Where are you, just?
Line three.
Line three. Okay, what have you changed on line three?
I just defined planning board as the board.
Oh, the board, you're planning out?
The planning board parentheses, the board shall be responsible for such duties that I can address if you want to see what I did.
No, I, we need to discuss.
Oh, okay, well, I just, that's, all right.
So you put the planning board, parentheses, the board.
The board.
Okay, gotcha. So what else?
Line four, town Greenville. Greenville's ordinance, capital O, and I just, I, the town of Greenville, I define as the town.
Town, oh, for our first use, but down at Greenville, and afterwards, which.
The town, right. And then on line five, it says for the town of Greenville, I just said for the town.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And then on the end of that line, instead of saying the planning board, I just put the board will operate under your authority.
Yeah. The planning board, the board operates. Okay.
Board, oh, ten, the board chapter consists of five. Lowercase or regular members for residents of the town to take out Greenville. Or Greenville Junction.
Wait, I don't think we should take out, did you say take out?
Well, you've defined Greenville.
I think we should keep the defining residents of Greenville or Greenville Junction. I think that should stay. I don't think we should say the town on that.
Yeah, because I think.
We want to define that, we want a resident of Greenville or Greenville Junction, correct?
I can state that legally, there is no Greenville Junction.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's just Greenville. Don't tell the people in the junction that, though.
They have their own zip code, they have their own post office.
I know, but they're Greenville.
Yeah. What was your suggestion about domicile?
Uh, using the word domicile rather than resident, because you can have, you can be a resident of multiple areas. Locations, but you're only domicile in one.
Who are, who are domicile? Is that what you want to say on?
Yeah.
Ten, okay.
And can I just ask, is this amending the existing ordinance, superseding it, or adding to it?
It's a, it's a different ordinance, because the, the first one, I started to tinker with, was the establishment. Of the planning board.
Okay.
Back in nineteen ninety four. Back in nineteen ninety-four, previous year.
So this isn't amending or superseding that, this is a new ordinance?
Complimenting it, because it addresses the organization and the procedures of the board.
Donald, this have to be voted on in a special town meeting?
I believe so, yes.
So maybe Maureen could help us put this, this, instead of, or prior to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Maureen, continue.
Well, um, do you want to take out Junction, Greenville Junction?
What do you think?
The only thing I am concerned about, because there is two area codes, it is oh, four, four, one, and oh, four, four, two.
Yeah, but legally, when you go to vote, you vote in Greenville, there's one town manager for Greenville.
And your taxes.
It's, it's to Greenville, it's legally, it's, it's, yeah, it's Greenville.
I know, I'm just used to our small little town.
So, or domicile in Greenville.
So you don't want the town.
Uh, no, I think, I think, uh, Johnny's saying we should be specific, in Greenville. And take out or of Greenville Junction. Pointed by the municipal officers of the town for staggered terms, three years. What else?
Well, due down to fourteen, and then I took out Greenville again, of the town.
Of the town, got that, okay.
Line fifteen, I took out planning. Does board mean?
Okay.
Board members' absence from meeting, or when they take out planning again, board member is disqualified because of the conflict of interest. The first and second alternate, in that order. Does that now, in, as with Maureen and Dawn, do we need to? Who's pick first? Have you seen?
Yeah, Dawn is primary.
So would it be the primary and second alternate then?
Yeah, because I was concerned when you said something about you'd alternate, is that, are we allowed to do that? Or is it if we have a second one, the secondary votes, but is it always the primary that, that votes? I'm just wondering if that's, if we're going by, I mean, it's, we can define it right here, but.
So it was, it was explained to me by the part that there has to be a specific order.
Right, so I'm just saying, like, say, we couldn't make a quorum, so then, and say, the, like, next, next meeting, we can't do it, so we ask the primary to vote, so then, you spoke, but in four weeks from then, we still have a quorum. Do you let Maureen vote again, or do we let Dawn do it again, because she's primary? That's what I'm trying to, like, is that how it is?
Yeah, that's a good question, I think it's primary, primaries.
That's what I'm thinking too, I just wanted, yeah, I just want to make sure, because I don't want to.
So would you say the primary and then absence of a primary is the secondary alternate?
Yes.
Does that cover, Johnny?
Yes, I think so.
All right.
Line seventeen, I took out planning.
Yep.
Line twenty, oh, on line eighteen, I mean, a member, now I guess, yeah, now I haven't read this for a while. As, I put a capital N.
A member?
A member, because it's a, and as you can see. Line twenty, just vote by a member, and voting on that issue shall be declared by the affected member, if a member, so, so the members should be, I was guessing, capitalized.
You're capitalizing member? All right, capitalizing member.
Yeah, because in, in line ten, the board shall consist of five, it was capital N, members, who are domiciled.
All right, I'll do that throughout, so you don't have to pick everyone. But going back to line thirteen, you want to make alternate lowercase? Because you may break it with lowercase.
Yeah.
All right, anything on page two? The changes you made already are.
Then I just define on line twenty-seven, the term of all officers shall be one, and then prefaces one, just to make it consistent, because some places.
The normal one.
The normal one.
Got it, got it.
Regular three, and line thirty-three consecutive meetings. Thirty-three would be the word thirty. Thirty-eight, we would take out planning, we make the board's website, of thirty, oh, line thirty-eight. In our official board meeting, must consist of the board, board, online, forty-three, take out board's members.
For all of the board necessary to conduct an official board meeting, must consist of at least four.
Board members.
Four, got it.
I can find a town, board, office, or CEO, on forty-five, but I'm.
Or is it CEO?
Yeah. Line forty-nine, capital S for secretary.
Question, yeah, so in the absence of a chair?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Who's?
That's good, that's a good question, that's.
I remember one time, you were, you went to hospital, you were sick, and Bill acted as the chair for that night of the meeting, so, no. He just ran the meeting, so I mean, Peter, you're running the meeting, right?
I'm so uncomfortable at all.
Why, you don't feel comfortable?
I don't feel comfortable, I mean, the, the aspect of it, it's, I, it's basically setting me up to be on the board and not on board, at the same time, it's a conflict for me. And I think we already established that through Dawn, that I can't be on board.
No, it's not, um, maybe Maureen can add to this, but I've been, I've, I'm on boards that have an executive director, and if the chair is not there, then obviously there's the vice chair. Or the executive director can run the meetings, and it's in the bylaws of those organizations that they can do that, that they don't vote. They basically just move the meeting along.
So you're saying they'd be the proctor of the meeting?
Yes.
Proctor of the meeting, so they're not.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just trying to define.
Right.
Yeah, but it really should be somebody who's on the planning board, and whether it's a newly created vice chair position, or there are already secretary positions, so maybe the secretary, who is a defined person, would sit into the chair.
That's consistent with what?
Yeah.
What it tells.
I, I wouldn't do a non-planning board number.
Yeah.
I'd kill the hell out of that if I were for the board.
So that's a great point, we could have had a meeting on, on November eighth, or I couldn't make it if we had a vice chair.
Or you already have a secretary.
Secretary.
So you don't have to create a new position for that.
Can you?
Sorry.
All right, this, this is really, really important, so let's put our heads together and think, wow. What we would like to do.
Or you can have some sort of established process where the board members who are present that night nominate or appoint somebody as chair for the night.
Let's be a rather, the vice chair could also, or the secretary.
That's a good idea.
I like Maureen's idea.
Yeah. The absence of the chair, the attending members will select one to serve as chair for that.
What line is that on?
From, from the president.
Well, that's gonna mean a retirement.
Because actually, it should be added right then, where it did say the, the chair shall also call meeting to the board, it should be going forward. Right in with chairs. Yeah, it's like, right, right by forty, under forty-three, it should be added on, not at the end.
And you want to specify it from the board member's present, so it's not just.
Yes.
Open to anybody.
Right.
Right, be anybody in the room, you know?
Yeah, it has to be a board member, okay, so, and I'll add it on to paragraph eight.
Thank you.
Right, yeah. Okay. Maureen, any more, for the end?
I just, just like fifty-four. Board maintains webpage on the town's website.
Yeah, yeah. I'll take all that.
So can I just have a quick question here, because I, when I went to tonight's meeting, I went to look for these, these two documents that we're reviewing, and it didn't look like the agenda had been posted since October. So that's the board's responsibility? Is, is that something that you're doing, Maureen, now, or do you need help with that, or?
Posting what?
The agenda.
The agenda.
And materials.
Peter, Peter constructs the agenda, and then, in the best of all possible worlds, he would give it to Holly, and Holly would post it. But she's been out for two weeks.
So, so I, I sent it out to you all, and I didn't realize I was supposed to give it to Holly, because that's the board's responsibility, not, not CEO's responsibility, right?
I think what Jenny's saying is, is posted for the publicity, on, on the website, so.
Yeah.
So, so Holly's been doing that, is what you're saying?
Right.
Or she hasn't been doing it, Jenny?
Hasn't, we, we didn't have a meeting last time.
Right, but it, but the agenda probably would have been posted, because it wasn't canceled to the very end, you know, it wasn't canceled till the last minute. So I looked for last week's one for this week, and neither of them were there. And there was no material list there either, so I sometimes go to there to pull materials as well. I, I mean, it's, it's okay if that's not something that you're gonna do, but this says that it's the board's duty to do that, so if that's the case, I just wanted to be able to help out if I could, because it didn't look like it was happening.
We've, we've done it in the past, and I think we should do it in, you know, in the interest of transparency, so the public knows what's on the agenda two weeks or a week from now. They'll see it, and if they're interested, they'll come and participate, because they're interested in either of the agenda. Or meeting materials that we'll be discussing, you know, those should be posted as well, in case a member of the public would like to see what they are. Or if someone says, oh, what a surprise this is, that you're doing this, you say, no, it's not a surprise, because it was posted two months ago. And that just recently came up with the kerfuffle some people had about the, uh, the new building on the corner of Pritham and Lakeview, you know, there were allegations on Facebook that this was corrupt, that the planning board did this without anyone knowing, this too big, tall building there, everything. And we could easily say, no, we had a special meeting, we did this, we did that, and it was all posted, had it on. So I, I think that's important, still there, that we have the website presence.
So I think Jenny was trying to say, so it says the board, that's us, so is that John, or, or like, who is going in and updating that?
I don't have access to the website.
Oh, okay, so you're saying we do need to send it to Holly, because she has access? Is that what we want for a plan of, is that how it's done?
Well, yeah, or, should we say that it's Peter, Peter does, so you're always in the loop about what's, that'd be nice, yeah. And, and you're right in the office, I mean, she has a question, you know, instead of J C N.
It sounds like a lot of this material originates with Pete, so is it, you know, is it easy for Pete to just include Holly on the mail to list when he's mailing all of us the information, or does it come to us and then we send it on to Holly? I'm just trying to determine what's the best process here, so that we can make sure that we're communicating well as a board to the entire community.
Just need somebody from the board to say, yes, this is the agenda that we're gonna go with.
If that would be, yeah, sure, if that would be, if that would be easiest way to do it for you, just to have it to the list, and the only thing that doesn't originate Peter's office is the minutes. And, and then the minutes would be sent, you know, once tinkered with that. To Peter, then posting.
Do you ever put the web address in the ordinance, because if that ever changes, you're gonna have to amend the ordinance?
Oh, this is smart. We'll notice back on this, you know, so tabling the website would be not verbiage, without the actual website. What's that?
Yeah, you wanted to leave that website.
Yeah. Back on page two, under paragraph E twenty-nine, I, I brought it up today, well, mentioning websites, but, but I'll, I'll remove participation policy.
Where are you, Johnny?
On the second page. By your way.
The line?
On twenty-eight, nine, twenty-eight, yeah, right there. Members may participate remotely, so. It's up to September twenty-seven. And then F is noon, and really, this is the matter that prompted our entire discussion, should a regular member miss more than three consecutive meetings, the member will be replaced on the board by an alternate member, and of course, I'll make alternate lowercase, absences from medical, family, or professional reasons, my notification to the board shall not approve, shall not approve of the count of consecutive meetings to someone else.
John, it doesn't actually say what happens to that regular board member, are they no longer a board member at all, or do they become alternate?
The one that's replaced?
Yeah.
Replaced, yeah, okay, they're replaced, you want something more specific? Removed or replaced? You want to say removed?
Removed from the board and replaced by an alternate member.
Okay, but removed, should be removed and replaced. That's good, very specific. Okay, any other? And once again, I'll, I'll, once again, but as Jenny is redoing the draft of the application process form, I will redo this draft, because we can consider it next time.
I think also line fifty-nine.
What's that?
On line fifty-nine, I don't think that's such a reference, subtract, there's no thirty, there's no middle thirty anymore. I don't know what the correct one is, but that's, that has been superseded. And then generally, I have a concern of this being brought forth as a new ordinance when it addresses procedures that are already established in an existing ordinance that's not being amended. And I'm wondering if with the, the minor changes that we are making, if it needs to be an ordinance, or if it could be done as planning board bylaws, rather than an ordinance. That's something that we as board, or you as a board voting members, could agree upon, and could amend from time to time. Because it's not dealing with the establishment or the ordinance. because it's not dealing with the establishment or the organization, that's not changing. It's really dealing with the procedural elements. And I, I just have, I have a concern with the fact that you're going to have an old ordinance and a new ordinance, they're both going to address organization, they're going to address terms. If it's not amending it, maybe the things that you want to change could be done as bylaws, so just something to consider.
Sounds great, you wouldn't have to go before tab, read.
Right.
Then, yeah, well, just go with bylaws, right? Is that what your suggestion?
I'm suggesting, well, either, either or, if you want to do it as an ordinance, I would suggest doing it as an amendment. If you wanted, it, it looks like substantively, there's only a couple of changes in here, and they are procedural. Those are things that could be done as, as bylaws.
Yeah, so just, just, just to be clear, this, the changes they're making, the, you are making are to a new document. This document doesn't exist as a, as a, as a standing ordinance.
It doesn't, but the text of this.
First.
First, well, I mean, you've got organization in the old ordinance, and you've got organization in the new ordinance, and this isn't technically amending it, so now you're going to have two ordinance that's dealing with organization, so.
So amending it, or maybe a bylaw.
Right.
I think we have to. Can a planning board have bylaws? I mean, how is the town structured? Can we have separate bylaws, or is that?
You can have bylaws that deal with how you deal with things procedurally, like the absence, the consecutive absences of a planning board member, where you're going to publish your agenda, things like that, that can certainly be done, just as an internal document. The, the establishment and the organization should be by ordinance, but it already is.
It is.
Really only changing the way that you function as a board. So, and, and ordinance, I mean, the other, a couple of other issues is, there's no enabling legislation anymore for planning boards, so you really, you don't want to repeal this, because this establishes the planning board, you don't want to reestablish it, where there is no enabling legislation now. And you're not really changing the planning board, there's still going to be five members, there'll still be two alternate members, they'll still need, you know, if you appointed for three years, so that's not really changing. It's really just, what do we do if somebody misses a bunch of meetings? Where are we going to publish the agenda? Things like that, so I, I would suggest that that's going to be simpler than creating a new ordinance or amending any existing one. It also has some conflicts in the existing ordinances, where it would be, this should be voted on in a town meeting, but there is a lame use ordinance that says that this can be created by the select board, so it'll work out that conflict too. This is.
So what are your suggestions? Would you just scrap the whole organization part?
I'm, I would say that we take a look at it and really highlight what is different in the proposed document from the existing document, and if it is all procedural, then to take out everything in here that's already addressed in the ordinance, and create a new document that just deals with the procedural elements and called bylaws.
What she said, I can confirm.
Sounds good. All right. Well, what is different about organization, as we do specify that members should be domiciled in Greenville? That's not explicit, it's not even mentioned in the, thank you, back in Florida. So, a plant in Mississippi could be on a board. Totally hypothetical. We should be explicit.
Well, you can amend this, not saying we can't amend this. We're just saying you shouldn't create a new ordinance that addresses something that's already in existing ordinance. If you want to make changes to an existing ordinance, it should be.
But if we amended it, then it would still have to go before the.
Correct. So you can do both.
What's your better?
Quick question, would the bylaws have to be approved by the selectmen as well? Like, if we were to create bylaws about procedures, any of that have to be approved by anybody, or is that, like, we can, like the Wild West? We can do whatever we want?
You don't believe so, but I don't know for sure.
So, bylaws are designed to basically be procedural in nature and not impactful outside of this organization.
Well, let me take another stab at it, okay? Moving in the direction of bylaws.
Yes, but I mean, I do agree, like, in the ordinance, if we did want to tweak, then maybe we should tweak the ordinance a little bit too, is that what you're saying? There's some parts that we, we've hit on two different monsters, I guess.
Yeah, absolutely, there's no, there's no reason you can't amend this ordinance, there's no reason you can't completely scrap it and do a new one, but I think that some of the things that we're talking about are best left outside of an ordinance.
So, are we talking ordinance or bylaws, I'm getting confused.
I think we're talking both, that's what I'm getting.
It sounded like an amendment for the specifics that you were talking about, and the bylaws for anything else.
For procedural.
For procedural stuff.
Although, the only issue that we're dealing with is domiciles, you have the appointment by the municipal officers, and we've already established that the application is going to require that you're domiciled in Greenville, so there won't be an appointment of anybody who's not domiciled here, so you don't necessarily need to call it out in ordinance.
So, imagine that you can save yourself.
I mean, I'll speak totally forthcoming, I'm not a big fan of doing things by ordinance when they can be done outside of ordinance, just because you get, you get into a lot of legal issues when you start messing around with the ordinance, so.
Yeah. So, with that said, would you like to take a stab at it?
Yeah, I, I'm happy to.
That's awesome. It's called delegation. Okay. And you have a copy of a document?
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much. All right, that's old business, quite a bit of that, so any new business? Items for next time, the thirteenth of December, public hearing. C A, C A D, we will be back. The lighting ordinance, are we ready to discuss that? On the thirteenth?
Not quite yet.
Okay.
We will, if I can get a meeting with Mike and, and Pete to complete what we started a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, we've got to cut short. Yeah. Ham and lumber, they coming back on the thirteenth?
They think they are.
Okay.
I don't think.
They think they are?
I. They, um, they need more time, and I, that they just keep pushing it to the next meeting, to the next meeting, that's me.
So then, the items for the next meeting will be the public hearing and C A D project, and then our two, our two documents that we've been talking about under old business, they'll, they'll be on the agenda for next time as well. Anything else? What's on your mind, any relevant planning board business? Let's start over the other end of the staff. What are you up to, planning board bylaws? John?
I do know that.
Oh.
My road is smooth, I, your road is, you're a happy camper. It's quiet, too.
I just want to apologize for missing the, the November eighth meeting, it just couldn't be helped. Out of it came something good, we're going to have some kind of process, you know, vice, yeah, the process of, of temporary vice chair turns with the meeting, so that'll be something new. Willa?
Airbnbs.
Airbnbs.
I get, people I know come to me and say, it's an issue. The one we hear on Washington, the people that live between the Airbnb and, someone told me about this, they wanted to put a fence up between the two, and with the cost of lumber for just putting a fence the length of that short piece of property, seven thousand dollars. The garbage cans are on the street, somebody else's yard, they're not picked up, they're not brought in. And this person who's complaining about all this, said that, I believe it's Bar Harbor, is establishing things for these airbnbs, and they're, they're, but I haven't had a chance to look at it. So, I, that's, it's an issue, people are complaining about it. They're not, oh, and the other thing was, is are they taxed? Like a hotel?
Yes.
They are taxed, that's what I said, I don't know, no, you know, like a.
Logins?
Lot, thank you, that's the correct, so I said I didn't know, but they're just not being monitored the way they should be.
Is it, is it just this one location?
This is the only one that's something Chris was complaining to me about, because it's, you know. Oh, the other thing was, ever since the roads been repaved, people don't come to the traffic light to go up Pleasant Street, East Road, they take Washington, cut out the corner, so the traffic is picked up.
On Washington.
On Washington. So. And Prospect, yeah, again, to go out to get onto East Road. And so, I don't know, I don't, I would just go to the select board for Milton Traffic, assign. I don't, I don't know if that would do anything, but this is, you know, they don't really ask me, but I don't know, but they said the traffic is, just has gotten insane, it's just really picked up since the roads have stepped.
That's interesting, I hadn't heard that. Would it, would it have been gone back to normal, or since the road been paved, or did it actually just, was it, was it down because the road was so bad before?
I don't, no, all I know is they said ever since the roads been paved, all the traffic has, the traffic has really picked up on that road.
Something you'd like me to look into, to see if we can resolve this without creating ordinance? I mean, if it's a single, you, single person, if it's, if it's a specific site, and not like a city.
I know, just that you're, I know. I'm not following. Is, is there a reason there's lots of traffic on that, on road, and it has nothing to do with it being fixed or not?
What I'm saying is, if this is a single isolated problem right now, maybe, maybe we should focus on what the problem is there, and fix it versus creating an ordinance for one isolated issue, unless it's a common issue for us a whole, whole time.
All I know is they're complaining about, there's a lot of traffic.
All right, so I, I would ask, is, all right, there's a lot of traffic, but this is dangerous. Are people speeding?
In what direction?
Is that?
In what direction? You know, I mean, a person coming down from, from Pleasant Street, takes Prospect, it's got to stop, then Washington Street, it's got to stop, when he went straight down Pleasant Street, he stopped once. I mean, why would you, why would you stop twice?
Yeah, I only take Prospect when, for the July, July and stuff like that, I'll cut Prospect down. Because you can't get out, you just can't get out of that road.
It's the same thing as making manor, right? Using making manor instead of performing that.
Oh, yes.
Same thing, it's Blue Street, it's the same thing. I mean, I, I agree with, with what Pete said, we get, you know, before you, something signed about food traffic, I mean, that, that could be, that could be had it forming to a little bit older. And how do you, how do you?
I know.
Monitor.
There's no way to enforce it.
But people come to me and what's on their minds, so.
So, is this something you want me to look into, this, this the next place?
I will ask again, and this person if I have, if it's, has it lessened, or is it just, you know, new because the road's new and it's nice to drive on, is it ongoing, or has it, and I'll get back.
I was, I was talking specifically more about the, the, the issues around the trash cans and the.
Oh, the Airbnb, whoever, I, I guess it's, they've been there for quite a while, and nobody that comes taking care of the place is, you know, come by and make sure the trash cans are off the main road, or in somebody else's yard. So, I mean, if you want to get into the people who are managing it, I don't, you know, maybe they, you know, keep an eye on it a little bit better.
John?
I'm good.
Good.
Thank you very much, is there a motion to adjourn?
Jenny?
Jenny, oh, got you, sorry, what's on your mind, Jenny?
I am good, thank you, John.
Oh, good.
Sorry.
Now, we have a motion to adjourn. Joining moves, any more seconds?
A second, six forty-five.
Six forty-five, all those in favor, six forty-five, I raise your right hand. Thank you very much.